Join the committee in the split to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and ask that you please note that the meeting is being electronically recorded. I'd also ask that you note the extra decorations that we have up in the room tonight. These are leftover decor from our first school committee spotlight event, which took place last week. Our three middle schools, Coelho Middle School, Wamsutta Middle School, and Brennan Middle School, were represented by three students. I think I speak for the rest of the committee when I say it was an honor to be able to discuss this year's choice for the big read. It was intimidating to discuss it at times with them. They represented their schools exceptionally well, and our gratitude goes out to the building staff that worked with them in preparation for the event and for their families for allowing them to participate with us. Our first item on our agenda tonight is open forum, and by policy, I am required to tell you that this is a time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you. Please know that we are interested in what you have to say, but cannot respond without background information on your issue. Would anyone like to address the school committee? Please come forward.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Marie Bagarella, and I'm a sixth-year teacher at Coelho Middle School. I'm also a member of the Communications Committee, which has been activated because the Attleboro educators, along with all the other APS unions, except for the assistant principals, are working without a contract this year. Over the coming months, Attleboro teachers will be attending school committee meetings because they are very concerned about the lengthy and extended process of negotiating a new contract. The Attleboro Education Association asks you, the school committee, to negotiate fair and equitable contracts for all the dedicated and hard-working Attleboro Public School employees as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are written comments, if they could just be forwarded to Ms. Nelson so we can have them for the record?
Sure.
Thanks.
I don't know who that is.
The superintendent's administrative assistant. Would anyone else like to address the school committee? Going once, twice, okay, and that will close open forum, and thank you for sharing your comments. We have a lengthy consent agenda tonight. If any members looking to volunteer and make a motion, feel free to signal. We'd be happy to share the responsibility tonight. A motion to accept a donation in the amount of $100 to the AHS Music Band Program from the Attleboro War Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. A motion to accept a donation in the amount of $181.21 to the AHS Student Council from McDonald's.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $434.17 from Target to the Coelho Gifts Donation Line.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I told you to volunteer, because now I've lost my place.
Four.
Thank you. A motion to accept a donation in the amount of $356.60 from Target to the Hill Roberts Gifts Donation Line.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept a donation in the amount of $108.43 from Target to the Wamsutta Gifts Donation Line.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept a donation in the amount of $694.23 from Target to Thatcher, Peter Thatcher Elementary School Gifts Donation Line.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept a donation in the form of a $25 gift certificate and $35 worth of art supplies to Coelho Middle School from Mr. and Mrs. John Webster.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept a donation in the amount of $110 from the Community Crusade for Children's Kid Education Fund to the Elementary Schools Gifts Donation Line.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept a donation of the following three checks from New York Life Benevolity Community Impact Fund to the Thatcher Gifts Donation Line. Check in the amount of $120, check in the amount of $40, a check in the amount of $80.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm going to go back to number 10 momentarily. Pursuant to Mass. General Law 53A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to City Council for approval the following tangible property item from Eric Ormandy to the Willa Elementary School. One 19-inch widescreen LCD monitor valued at $75.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Pursuant to Mass. General Law 53A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to the Municipal Council for approval the following tangible property item from Charles and Susan Welsh. One computer equipped for use by the Special Education Department in the cause-effect programs with an estimated value of $250.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And finally, we have a last-minute addition to the consent agenda tonight. I think the community is aware at this point that the Studley Elementary School has formed a very important partnership with the Feinstein Foundation out of Rhode Island, and the Feinstein Foundation tonight is donating $15,000 to the Studley Elementary School Gifts Donation Line.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Tyler.
No, I just want to say what a great partnership this has been for Studley Schools and the Feinstein Foundation. Their generous donations, I can't total up in my head how much we've gotten from this partnership, and I know all the kids actually enjoy and love being in the program. It has a lot of benefits for that school, and let's hope one of our other schools can get on it sometime in the future.
Yeah, and I know we've touched upon this in the past as other donations have come in, but I think it would be helpful to have the opportunity to hear from the administration at some point about the partnership, the difference it's made, perhaps where some of the funds have gone, and some of the sort of unique dynamics that are present at Studley for that reason. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And that completes our consent agenda tonight, and we will move on to our Around Attleboro Spotlight Events with our student representative, Jack Flynn. So, Mr. Flynn, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for taking the last-minute PowerPoint, as always. We appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Someone has their remote, so there you go.
Okay, so, the Attleboro High School Chris Heron Guest Speaker. So this will be on Monday, October 20th, in Bray Auditorium. It'll be NBA former basketball player Chris Heron, and he'll talk to the students about healthy life choices, peer pressure. This, for me, I've been a freshman and a sophomore at the school. I've heard about it, like, all the juniors, all the seniors go every year, and I don't know, I'm kind of, I was jealous that I didn't get to go to this presentation. It sounded cool, interesting. So this year, the juniors and seniors will go to that. I'm excited. I'm a junior, so that'll be good.
We are excited as well.
The Title I Breakfast Program, Thursday, October 23rd at 8:30 a.m. Information Session for the Title I Families About the Title I Programs and Opportunities That's pretty much all there is for that. Brennan Middle School Best Buddies Meet and Greet, Wednesday, October 8th at 5:00 p.m.
5:30.
Five, 5:30 p.m.
That's the peanut gallery, sorry.
No, that's fine. So that'll be, that'll be an opportunity for best, for buddies and peer buddies to meet and get to know each other with intention of opening lines of communications amongst the program participants. That'll be a good way to start off the year for best buddies and get things rolling. Attleboro High School, the Guidance Department's College and Career Opportunity Fair, Thursday, October 9th, classes of 2015 and 2016 will have the opportunity to vote, to visit with representatives from over 100 post-secondary institutions. This I'm excited for. I actually went last year. It was a good experience, but I was, I was a little young as a sophomore.
Were you crashing it, or were you invited?
No, I was crashing it. I was, I wasn't invited.
It's a good time to admit that.
Yeah, but, um, so yeah, it'll be good to get an idea of all, there's so many here. There's over 100, so it'll be different from where every single, like, week, there's a couple colleges coming in, and you have like a half an hour presentation with them. This will give you a big idea of all the colleges that are coming, but not only the colleges, there's the military, there's, there's people from around the community coming and talking to the students to help them, like, make decisions about what they might want to do after high school. So that'll be an awesome experience for the juniors and seniors.
I agree. We are gonna, Mrs. Hickox and Ms. Little will be presenting in further detail, and Mr. Ernie as well, later in the program, so certainly at any point, if you, Mr. Flynn, chime in from the student perspective, we'd be happy to hear that. So thank you very much. We did, we opened tonight's meeting with open forum, and I know some folks did come in just during that last presentation. I'm happy to briefly reopen open forum if there's anyone who would like to address the school committee.
I would, if that's okay.
Sure, why don't you just come up to the podium and introduce yourself? And just, I think I fulfilled my policy obligation by reading the policy once, but I'll just say that open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in back-and-forth dialogues, although we're interested in what you have to say, we cannot respond without background information on your issue.
Okay, that's fine. My name is Nancy Block. I have two sons at Wamsutta, Samuel and Jamison. They are in fifth and seventh grade. As Mike knows, unfortunately, I have had busing issues many, many times throughout the years, but nothing like this. My children are walking back and forth to school every day on 152. It is not safe, and I am not getting answers, and I'm not the only person. I know, so I posted on Facebook, and there were a long list of posts, not just for myself, but for many other parents who are past aggravated. I mean, I have a 10-year-old. He's walking on 152, where a few years back, a city water worker was killed, every single day. It's not safe, and I'm not getting answers.
Okay. Ms. Sheen, could you just follow up?
Oh, yes.
Okay. If you could, as I said, it's not really a time to go back and forth, but I'll certainly confer with the superintendent, who'll have a response for you within the next day.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the school committee?
I have another, the same issue.
Okay, if you could just come up to the podium.
Thank you.
If you could just introduce yourself and get your address.
Sure. My name is Kelly Hegarty, and my son Hayden goes to Brennan, and I'm having a busing issue as well. They were told, I was told that my son gets the bus for free just to find a bus stop. There's no bus stop, and last week, we got an updated bus route, and my son waited three days, half hour, and no bus came. So I'd like to see that addressed.
Okay. Could you just make sure that Mr. Fattato, who's just to your right, gets your name and contact information, so we can have someone contact you on the next day?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the school committee? Okay, then, once again, we're going to close open forum, and we'll move on to our new business agenda, which, Mrs. Sore, thank you for moving along. If you could actually go right to the next one. This is just a quick follow-up from the briefing, the presentation that Mrs. Scales and Mr. Sore made at our last meeting. The school committee's Strategic Planning Initiative, which is getting underway this week, I've passed out to school committee members and can make available as of tonight the appointments to the subgroups. We've had a variety of individuals and stakeholders with different perspectives who have volunteered to participate in the Strategic Planning Initiative. As we talked about at our last meeting, the, Mr. Sore, Mrs. Scales' presentation is available on attlebourneschools.com, so if anyone didn't have a chance to see that particular presentation, don't want to watch the entire video of the meeting, you can see the PowerPoint that was presented there. It talks about the timeline, about the importance of stakeholder input and the grassroots nature of the effort. These are, as we identified before, the four corners of the initiative that, when just doing this quick briefing, it felt like it was worth reiterating one more time, if you could go to the next one. I mentioned, these are, so these are all basically the parts that we forgot to mention last, last time. The first one, we've talked about the three subgroups, the mission/vision subgroup, the strategic planning subgroup, and the public engagement subgroup. There will be a fourth group, and this is frankly an opportunity for anyone who maybe missed the opportunity to volunteer when we were doing outreach in the spring, over the summer, and the early part of the fall. If anyone else would like to have some, and this is particularly, would be a good volunteer opportunity for community members who perhaps don't have the scheduling flexibility that may be required by the actual subgroups. I know there's some subgroup members in the room right now, so we're going to be flexible with the subgroups as well, but the advisory committee will be sort of more a roving or at-large type group that will have the opportunity to work with various focus groups and just make comments on the work that's coming out of those subgroups. And that's something that we still need some volunteers for, so people can feel free to email the superintendent's office or myself, and we can, we can work to put that group together. The second part, and Mr. Flynn, I want to apologize to you and Tyler for not including this in the last one. Our student advisory council representatives will serve as ex officio members of the advisory group, and they will have the opportunity to participate as well, and that was just, it wasn't mentioned in the previous presentation. The last thing was, all about policy, I can make the appointments. I do think that, given the gravity of this particular effort, it would have been appropriate to ask for a school committee endorsement vote, which frankly, I forgot to do last time, and I apologize for that, so I thought we could just clean that one up here quickly. And if we do the last slide before we do that, this slide represents the various perspectives and stakeholders that are represented by the 30 volunteers. There are several Attleboro School staff members, several individuals who work as educators but in other districts, but are Attleboro residents, parents and grandparents, both of current and future students, students, as I just said, alumni, perspectives from career and technical education. All nine building communities are represented in various ways, local business representatives, and a number of other folks. So are there any questions or anything that we perhaps didn't cover last time that we could go over quickly now? Okay, then I would just ask for a motion to endorse the Strategic Planning Initiative.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And we'll now move on to another very important presentation, which I believe will be led by our assistant superintendent along with the superintendent of schools. This is a presentation that the school committee hears each year, and I think I speak for a lot of people in the room, when I say that, it's one we look forward to each year, because each year, there's steady and significant progress that is a consequence of a lot of hard work on the, on the part of individuals across the district and the performance of our students in the state assessment exams. So, Mrs. Sore, if you want to take it from there.
Thank you very much. So this evening, I'm here to talk about the, our assessment results and accountability affirmations for 2014. This is based on our MCAS results from the spring of 2014. The state lifted the embargo on, five days, 26, was that the day? So, just recently. So now we can talk publicly about how, how we did. My goals for this evening, one, I want to go over achievement and growth results. I want to talk about our accountability results. Those are separate from chief, from achievement and growth. Achievement and growth are how students individually do. Accountability is how the state rates those performances. Then I'd like to have a little bit of a discussion about what it all means, and then we can certainly talk about what we plan to do as a result of it all. First, I have up English Language Arts. This is a slide that I've used over the years, so it shouldn't be too unfamiliar. The red bars are the state performance, the blue bars are Attleboro. This is all students, at least all the ones that are tested, three through eight and 10. And as you can see, the results this year, we went up from 73 to 71. The state stayed the same at 69, and so we have, once again, done better than ourselves that did before. We did better than the state, and those lines, the blue line is the Attleboro trend line, which you see has a nice, steady trajectory upwards, and the state is much flatter, almost a horizontal line. I guess it's got a little bit of growth, but not much, because the last four years, they've been stuck at 69. So, we're very happy with these results. It shows all the hard work of our English teachers to move us forward, but I want to say that any time we compare results from one year to another, we should be cautious in what we decided means, because we are comparing one group of kids who took one test to a different group of kids who took a different test. And while there are, you know, statistical measures being used to make those scores as comparable as possible, many times, you're talking about different groups of kids taking a different test. You can't, it's not the same as, if you gave me a test today and then gave me the test tomorrow and compared those two scores, there would, that has a different level of significance than if you gave that test to me and then gave that test to somebody else further down the line. So, you know, while we would like to, I think we should be very happy with these results. I don't want to brag too much about them, because if they weren't as positive as they were, I'd be saying, well, you can't, you can't always take as much from that as you'd like. Breaking that further down by grade level, this chart shows that same score, and we've talked about before, that was 73. There's that 73-all number. The state 69, so again, that's, we're four ahead of the state. So this is it by, so we have the grades here, and then the number in parentheses is how that number relates to the year before, which again, we always want to be careful when we put too much meaning on that. And then again, the state, you'll see that the state number's relatively flat. Our numbers fluctuate more, which is what you would expect with a sample size like ours, which is much smaller than obviously than the state's. And so, in some places, we go down, you know, grade three was down a little bit, other places, grade four goes up a lot. It fluctuates a bit more, but it's within a pretty steady realm. And then again, how we're doing against the state. The one place in yellow represents the one place where we are below the state, which is in grade five. Seven out of eight, we're equal to or above the state, which again, is a very sharp performance.
Could I just ask, I mean, there seems to be, for the most part, a correlation between the states and our numbers with regard to certain grade levels being generally within the same area and from a percentile standpoint? Just from an educator's perspective, why is that? Why is it that certain grade levels, the scores?
Well, why, I mean, that, that the numbers across the line are relatively close represents that our students are doing similarly to other students in other communities across the state.
Right.
Why the number is different from, from level to level?
And it's, and that's the case both locally and at the state level?
Well, again, the reason why it's that way in both places is because our kids are comparable to other kids. The reason why it fluctuates from row to row is because we're talking about different tests. So it's a different test, and therefore, it's being normed differently, so...
I guess that's my question, why? Why, why is it that at one grade level, we would norm such that our kids are going to be between 75 and 85 percent, whereas in another grade level, it's different?
Um, well, I would, would really have to ask the statisticians why they've done it quite the way they have, but...
They haven't, like, sort of offered a rationale? I don't, I'm just curious.
I, I think that the rationale is that when you go from grade level to grade level, greater expectations take place at certain grade levels, especially when you come into mathematics, then you start reaching higher order of thinking skills with regard to math. So it's an introduction of new concepts, so forth, so there may be a deviation from...
So where the curriculum is aligned for a grade level?
Yep.
That makes sense, I was just curious. Any other questions about this, then? Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, the huge difference between grade four and five. I mean, I'm going to say about four or five years ago, we really put a big emphasis on the transition from elementary to middle school, but it's not being reflective. I mean, maybe in one way it's been reflected, a positive 14, but then when you drop down to the negative two, so that, I'm just kind of concerned, a little confused about, that's a pretty significant drop-off from one level to the next.
Yeah, so we've been working on the transition from elementary to middle school for quite some time. It is a persistent problem for us, and that's because, as a district, that's where we do the transition. I think one of the things that we face is that, you know, we're switching from fourth to fifth, other districts are doing it at different times, so that's really where we're going to always have a struggle, because any time you have kids going from one building where they're known to a new building, which has a new set of standards and a new mix of kids, that's always going to come with it its own set of challenges. So, grade five, I think, will always be a place for, a challenge for us, just like grade nine is a challenge for us. Anytime you have a transition, that's going to reflect in, in, you know, I mean, not necessarily lower scores, but I, I think it's going to show up in the numbers, because it is, as I keep saying, challenging.
Could, could we just go back to that for one second, though?
Sure.
I mean, and I'm not trying to ask a question to, like, indicate any type of, you know, major revolutionary change here, but do we look at the data in terms of where other districts transition? And if we are consistently struggling in fifth grade, regardless of how much concentration or effort we put into that grade level, could you infer from that that perhaps that's not where children should transition from one building to another? Is that one reasonable inference you could draw?
Well, if we did a comparison of, of other districts and look at where their transitions are and found that that had an impact, we could say that theoretically. We haven't...
But we, I didn't know if, I didn't know if the state would tell you, oh, yes, if you're a four-to-five transition, you're always going to have a struggle.
No, the state doesn't provide that analysis for us.
No. Mr. Wetherstone?
My understanding, from what you're saying, is that if we did the transition, you know, between sixth and seventh grade, it would be our seventh-grade numbers, that would be, or that's what those districts...
I'm theorizing, but I think we would find that it would cause trouble wherever we do it.
Right, so it's just whatever the year is.
You gotta, you gotta pick a place to, to have that trouble, unless you're going to go, you know, a series of K-12 schools, you know?
And I think what's, what's interesting is the, the score is right below grade five, and when you go to grade six, and you see the increase in grade six after being in the school, and then where the state is, all of a sudden, the same group of kids who were tested from grade five to grade six, now all of a sudden are even. In other words, Attleboro had made six-point gain from grade five to grade six.
Mm-hmm.
And then you go to the next one, where it's, it's a 4% change, well, now we're equal at 68% across the state. So I think Mr. Sore is exactly correct. It's about the transition, going from school to school and from our elementary schools to the middle school. Sooner or later, you're going to see that. It might take place in the sixth grade.
Right, and I think that, I think that we, we understand that wherever the transition is imposed, you're going to have that added challenge, and that I would imagine it would be unlikely that you wouldn't have some type of difference. That being said, not every district transitions from four to five, and, you know, I would be curious if, in districts where the transition takes place at some other grade or frankly, age level, whether or not there are, there's a proportional difference there. I think that would be an interesting thing to, to look at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so same graph, graph for math. Again, nice stee curve for Attleboro, and the state here is a little bit less flat, more of a trajectory to it, but again, we're outpacing the state. While we did not go up from last year, we stayed at 67, the state actually went down from 61 to 60. So we, our, our gain grew even if we stayed static.
I don't, Mr. Sore, I don't want to get on you about, you know, the monotone inflection, but looking at that graph, that's a pretty significant number right there, correct?
Well, I don't like to overplay.
I don't think, I don't think anyone's ever going to accuse you of overplaying. I think that's, I think you're safe with regards to that, but, I mean, that's...
It's impressive.
They both are.
I'm building up to a crescendo here. I guess it's a better point, so...
And I'm not trying to get heavy, I'm just saying that, like, I don't want people in the back, you know, I want to make sure that everybody's awake and, you know...
Yeah, no, the, these are strong trend lines that demonstrate a lot of hard work on the parts of teachers and students. So again, a further breakdown, and again, to your point, these are some really fantastic numbers of, of tremendous gains. And in math, we are eight for eight. We, we beat the state on every field we played them. So Attleboro was, is getting it done.
Do you want to pull that, I know that there have been some changes with regard[1792.13] Do you want to pull that out? I know that there have been some changes with regards to the delivery of math over the past several years. I mean, is any of that, is that, would you attribute this to that to some degree? Or I mean, how would you pull this apart and, and for people that are just seeing these types of numbers for the first time? Why is it that Attleboro is outpacing the state to such a dramatic extent?
Well, I would say that we have high standards. I think that we really are pushing ourselves and pushing ourselves to, to improve our practices. You know, the kind of, I'm, I'm here to tell you, the math that we're asking of our elementary students far, is, is far more challenging than, than the math that I think most of us got at this table. And we continue to, to push all the time. I mean, I, I wouldn't attribute to any one program or resource or anything like that. I think it's the hard work of the teachers analyzing the data and really digging into the, the curriculum and making decisions that are going to yield better results.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson, just... You know, I was kind of curious because I know over the last couple of years, we've basically put three years of math in the last couple of years in between sixth and eighth grade. And to see the numbers coming the way they are, I would think you've all got to be very, very happy with what you're seeing there.
And we...
Because, I mean, that, when I, when you first laid out that program a couple of years to us, ago to us, and I was thinking, this, this really going to have to be a lot of work that gets done in those grades. And it's, it's very, it's a great sensation to see those numbers the way they are.
And part of the excitement I have about the results is that, you know, the, the success builds on itself. Each year that, you know, the kids, we're doing a better job with the kids. That means that in their next year, they go better prepared. And then they do better as a result that they're better prepared. And then they're even more prepared in the further year as it goes up. I know that the high school remarks that, you know, they are seeing students in ninth grade who are much better prepared for high school work than was the case, say, five years ago. Demonstrably better. And, you know, that comes from the fact that they are doing better in elementary and middle school. So they're, you know, they're learning more and they're better prepared as a result. And, you know, at my house, I'm stunned by what my kids are asked to do at elementary school and what they're able to do as a result of that. It's very impressive.
Thank you.
And I didn't really highlight it, but in both charts, our, our growth is within what we would expect. Growth, you know, growth is, achieve, maybe I should talk about achievement and growth for instance a second. Achievement is, is a sort of objective measure of just whether or not you know things or not, you know, whether you meet the standard or not. And growth is a measure, is a relative measure of how your performance is against people who were going into the test similar to you in terms of their, their past performance. So, you know, you can have students with high achievement but low growth because even though they're a good student, you would expect them, because they're a good student, to do even better. And that they didn't, so they have a low growth compared to other people that are, you know, high achievers like themselves. Whereas you could have another student who has low achievement, they didn't do as well as the other students. But because of their past performance, this particular test, they actually got high growth because they did better than other students who had a similar performance to them. So, achievement is sort of that static measure and growth is the, the relative measure. And the state makes the point that because growth is, is based off of these cohort scores, we don't work off of an average SGP, we work off a median. So, they literally look and see like what would be the, the aver, what would be the halfway point of all the various scores in that group. And then statistically, nothing within, within ten points of that is statistically meaningful. So, a growth, a growth percentile of forty is, as far as statistically speaking, is about the same as a fifty, and a fifty is the same as a sixty. So, that band from forty to sixty is considered to be normal growth. Anyone in the forty to sixty band is considered normal growth. Below forty is considered low growth, and that's a concern. And above sixty is considered high growth, and that's something to be very proud of. And in our district, we're getting typical, typical growth across the board. You know, we'd love to see high growth, and occasionally we get some. But as long as we're not seeing low growth, it's good. And I'm glad to report that we are seeing typical growth in Attleboro. Very briefly, we also test for science. Not surprisingly, we are behind the state in our science. This is pure reflection of the fact that we as a district have not put the same kind of effort into our, our science curriculum as we have in English and math. We don't have science coaches. We don't have a K-12 science coordinator. You know, in many cases, we have people who aren't science teachers teaching a science class in, in our middle schools. So, you know, the, the emphasis over the years has been on English and math. And I think that that is reflected in the results. And, you know, it shouldn't surprise us that we're lagging a bit at the science. That being said, our, our results are somewhat comparable to the state. And in our eighth grade test especially, we're above. So, you know, I think the middle schools can take great pride in the fact that, given the, the limitations of the effort so far, they are, are producing excellent results. And, you know, again, the trend line, we are catching up.
Yeah.
We were way behind when we started and we are slowly moving towards...
It has to be the case that other districts have dealt with the same challenge to the extent that there was a accountability push in English and math first. And districts had that incentive, that need to, to focus on that. Perhaps we've done it disproportionately.
Yeah, frankly, I'm not sure other districts were so unbalanced as...
Is that true really?
That's my, my guess.
I know, it's true. Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, something we would like to address and we try to address, you know?
Yeah.
I've twice now sat here in March trying to make the case for a, a science coordinator to help with the effort.
Oh, you can make it again.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try again. All right, so that was achievement. All right, those were our achievement results. And as you can see, we have a lot to be proud of. So the state uses those scores to then give accountability levels to both schools and districts. And from those accountability levels, we're supposed to judge, you know, how we're doing on the whole. This, this, for those who have been paying attention long enough, this regime that we're under now replaced what used to be called adequate yearly progress that was part of No Child Left Behind.
And this is the fourth year where we've used these or thereabouts?
Is it the fourth? I think it's the third.
Third.
All right, so. Attleboro as a district is a level-two district. That's out of five. We have four level-one schools. Hyman Fine, Thatcher, Willett, and Coala. And we have five level-two schools, which would be Attleboro High School, Lumsada, Brennan, Studley, Hill Roberts. This is tremendous that we're a level, level-two district. I think we can take great pride in it. And not only do we have four level-one schools, but I want to tell you tonight that one of our schools, Hyman Fine, has been given a special recognition. I have a letter here from the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, Mitchell Chester. Dear Principal, your school was one of only forty-two schools across the Commonwealth. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recognized this year as a 2014 accommodation school for its high achievement, high progress, and/or narrowing proficiency gaps. Congratulations on this noteworthy accomplishment. My hope is that your school will serve as a model to schools statewide, that you will continue to make strides to ensure that all students are prepared for success at the next level. In closing, you will find a certificate of achievement. Please extend my congratulations to your entire school community, from administrators to educators, staff, parents, and most of all, students on this outstanding accomplishment. The state sent us a very nice little plaque. Certificate of Achievement, Hyman Fine Elementary School, 2014 Massachusetts Accommodation School for Narrowing Proficiency Gaps.
Is anyone, is anyone from Hyman Fine here tonight?
I'm Hyman Fine, not tonight.
Okay.
That's next week.
Well, why don't we give Hyman Fine a round of applause anyway? There we go. I'm sure they're, they're watching on. So... Mrs. Skels.
Which, were there any schools that went up and any schools that went down? As far as the ones and twos?
Yes. That's a question I should have anticipated. I believe last year we were five level ones and four level twos. So, the question was which ones changed?
Any schools that have jumped multiple levels?
No, I mean, it just went from one to all.
Over the last, over the last two years?
Uh, no. I think the... I should remember this, I'm sorry. But Brennan and Studley are the ones that... See, it's one of those two. Nobody moved up from a, to a level one.
I don't know if anyone in the audience would like to see that, but feel free to, as long as we get it back.
You would?
Did anyone see it? Oh, here you go.
I would actually like to see it. I want to take a picture for the library, so she can talk to me in school. Thank you.
Attleboro, the district, is level-two as a, because that, you are whatever level your lowest school is. So, our lowest is level-two. That's what we are as a district. So, we did slip a little bit. So I, I wanted to make a, a point about that. The way that the accountability system is created, the top eighty percent of all schools are levels one and two. So you get into level three, four, or five by being in the bottom twenty percent. Right? So, they take the top eighty percent. And those are all the level ones and twos. But within that eighty percent, all of the districts are marching towards narrowing the gap. So in, I forget what year it was that they set these things. But a couple of years ago, the state looked at how far away you were from a hundred percent. To go way back, when No Child Left Behind was created, the feds told everybody that everyone had, one hundred percent of students had to be proficient by 2014. There was a lot of problems with that goal, laudable as it might be. But lo and behold, 2014 came and went. And in, in no states were schools producing kids that were a hundred percent proficient. In fact, Massachusetts was the only state in the nation that really didn't try to game that system by lowering standards. We held our standards high. And as a result, the number of failing schools according to No Child Left Behind was enormous in Massachusetts. Massachusetts was, according to that, you know, adequate yearly progress was, was, was really, really lagging as a state. Yet, when you looked at Massachusetts' results on other measures like the NAEP, we're the, the best state in, in the country. So, this leads to the question, well, how, how does the state with really, really high achievement scores on the measures across the country, on national measures, have such a low, such a, such a high level of failing schools? Well, the problem is that your, your system didn't work. So, that whole idea of being a hundred percent proficient by 2014 has been revised. So now what they've done is they're, okay, you are where you were on whichever year it was. It was like 2010, say. They measured where, how far you, away you were from a hundred percent proficiency. And said, by 2017, you need to cut that number in half. So if you were at fifty percent in 2010, you needed to get to seventy-five percent by 2017. If you were at ninety percent, you had to get to ninety-five percent by 2017. So each district is on its own set of goals, targets, that it needs to meet to cut the overall number in half by 2017. No matter where you are in this equation, no matter what your own district's own set of standards are that you have to meet, your own set of targets, it gets harder and harder each year to take the next step towards cutting that number in half. And that's why, you know, the number went from five-ten, number of level-one schools in 2012 was five-hundred-and-ten. Again, this is statewide. I took this right out from the Boston Globe last week. 2013, that number dropped to five-oh-five, and then boom, 2014, the number drops to, to four-hundred-and-twenty-four. The number of level-one schools in the district dropped by fifteen percent this year. And I, well, you can, we can talk about it next year and see if I'm right. I think you're going to see it drop again. Because as districts approach those targets, as those targets get higher and higher each year, as you have to make the, the next target, the next target towards cutting that deficit in half, more and more schools are going to struggle with that. And if you don't make your goals, you can't be level-one. So level-one is for the people who are making their goals. And level-two are for the schools that are making progress, enough progress that they're in the top eighty percent, but they're not quite making all their goals. And that's a pretty good picture of where we're as, as a, as a district. You'll, you'll notice that of the twenty percent, the number of level-four schools, I mean, it's, it's in the thirties. And then the, the number of level-five schools, it's, it's a handful that the state moves into those. And that's, this is, this is, this is real problems, and then these people are basically taken over by the state.
So, does that indicate then that... What, what impact does that have sort of on the usefulness of the data? Or at least of the designations in the years ahead? Is the usefulness being diminished by that reality that you just articulated?
I am implying that, yes. That we shouldn't put too much stock in these measures. They are useful to an extent, but to really judge ourselves on this measure, I, I think would, would be a mistake. I think there are better ways to, to judge our, our, our success.
Mr. Larson.
If this is truly the model that they're going to use, I mean, statistically, there's going to be a point at which people in level-one schools statistically just won't be able to make the cut. Because there just won't be enough...
Yes.
I mean, you're, you're going to be pushing hard on the ceiling of a hundred percent that in, you know, it, it would be a great reality that everybody could be a hundred percent, but it won't. The reality is that you won't have a hundred percent people being proficient.
That's right.
And... And whether you're a level-one or a level-two, I've never gotten the impression that there's any significant difference.
There isn't.
So the classification really is...
Well, it's the difference between people who are making their targets and people who aren't. But, you know, the targets are arbitrary. I mean, we can say where they came from and they help us to move towards progress.
Right, but you could...
You know, they didn't, they didn't come from any sort of, you know...
But you could be in, in, you could be one of the best schools in the state and not be able to be a number one.
Well, it depends on how you judge what that is.
Statistically, you will get to a point where you can't make the progress of the fifty percent.
Some of the schools in that list that dropped off the level-one are, were people who consider themselves to be excellent schools in...
And, and I guess that's my point.
In wealthy communities that, you know, are offended by the notion that they're, you know, not the best of the best. And that's precisely what you're talking about because they're, they're running up against a statistical model that they can't beat. And frankly, you know, the school districts, well, again, these are schools, the schools are measured this way. The schools that had low performance at the time have the greatest amount of room to grow. I mean, they have the greatest distance to go, but they also, you know, have a lot to work with. The people that were up close to the ceiling at that time, you know, it's, it's hard to come up with that extra step. And, you know, if you're a small enough school with, you know, enough of a gap to go, I mean, literally, you could be talking about whether or not you're level-one or two based on the performance of one student.
Right, but the reality is you're going to have a lot of very good, running, efficient schools and districts that are going to be number twos simply because of math.
Yeah, which is why, I mean, and because we can recognize that, is why we shouldn't pay too much attention to it. I mean, I think we should acknowledge it. I think we should pay attention to it. But to somehow say that level-one or level-two is, you know, the end-all-be-all of how we're going to judge how we're doing here in Attleboro, I, I think would be a mistake.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, because we were just, we said a minute ago, like, what is the distinction between level-one and level-two? I, I think this seems to me like it's, it's, and I, I know we've, we've touched upon this in years past, but it really is a double-edged sword. On one hand, Attleboro is progressing at a rate that we want to put the statistics out there that demonstrate that, use that as part of our efforts to promote the district, and explain why some of the misperceptions are so off-base. On the other hand, it doesn't take that long to peel apart these numbers and understand how they're not flawless in terms that you, and what it really comes down to, I think, is you can't rank school systems in the way that some, you know, PowerPoints might indicate that you, that you could. You can...
You, any system you create is going to, you know, skew the results in one direction or another. It's going to benefit some people and, and work to the detriment of others. I, I don't think that therefore we shouldn't try to measure, but I just think that we should be cognizant of the ways in which the system benefits us and works against us.
And I think that's what's important. It's the context in which we look at these numbers. That it is important, it is encouraging. But at the end of the day, there isn't some other system that we could use to truly evaluate the, the, the level of, of the quality of the education that's being offered. Mr. Storrs, do you have a question?
It's a two-part question. As far as the levels, my understanding is because of the decision for the test change, that's a, we're held harmless next year, meaning...
Correct.
We can, we can improve, but we will not go down.
That's correct.
And then the second part is, you know, every year we compare previous year's datas to, to this year's data. And how do you foresee that being next year is my nice way of asking the question.
They tell us that we'll be able to do it.
For aggregate, I was told, or from what I read, aggregate only, they're going to... For aggregate, I was told, or from what I read, aggregate-only, they're going to create some sort of aggregate comparison to what it might be if they had taken it, but that's it. So we won't have individual, will we have individual grades, or will it only be district-wide?
I do not know what they're going to be able to produce or not. I've been led to believe that the same kind of level of data that we've had in the past, they're going to be able to replicate. But, you know, I don't have a lot of confidence, so we'll see what they do.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
All right, so that all being said, these are our targets. Again, you get seventy-five. And if you meet, if you meet the seventy-five point, then you are, that's on target. And as you can see, we only, I mean, we didn't meet any of our targets. We are off on all of them. So this is the point that I think is worth making. You know, we have a great deal of work to do. You know, it is, I take great pride in the achievement results that we're producing. But we have to recognize that, you know, there is a good deal of work that has yet to be done in terms of, you know, meeting the needs of all students. And when you break down, I mean, pick a group, any group, all students, high-need students, low-income, you know, any racial group you want, including white, you know, we have, there is room to gain there, and we're working hard on it. So I think the results are helpful in that they help us to put into perspective that there is work to be done. But, you know, when you put it into perspective of how we're doing compared to everybody else, you know, everybody has this problem, which is the point I want to make in the next slide. This is how the state's doing as a whole, and against its own goals it set for itself. So, you know, I'll go back. So this is Attleboro.
We do have one met target there. I mean.
Well.
Is that, is there a reason?
Seventy-four, I mean.
Just because it's that close, is that why?
It's just that close, yeah. Yeah, and it's cut off. I literally took a screenshot rather than replicate this. So that's Attleboro, and then that's the state. I mean, I don't know, I feel like we're outpacing the state based on those graphics. So, you know, the state as a whole has this problem, which is not to say that it's not something that we should concern ourselves with. But I just, you know, think we should put it in perspective.
Can I just make one other point?
Yep.
I do think that it would be a whole, again, this is the issue when you try to get into evaluating organizations like this with these types of metrics. If we were to look at that screen by the state, and every row said that we've met the targets, I think we'd be asking, well, are we setting the right targets? Right, I mean, and then when we talk about the one-hundred-percent problem, I, I mean, I think we kept, we keep running it.
It goes back to why I'm saying that the targets are arbitrary. I mean, we picked the targets because they were half of the gap, as if, you know, the gap in and of itself was special, or that half was somehow a magic number. So, you know, I don't think that, we did pick thoughtful targets. We just said, all right, you know, everyone's got a gap, half is what the target is.
Half sounds good.
Half sounds good.
Yeah.
So, you know, but I don't want to say that, well, therefore, we shouldn't worry about it or let ourselves off the hook. I mean, you know, that we don't get one-hundred percent of the students to one-hundred percent proficiency isn't good enough. So we have to continue to work at it.
But I think what, because I think one of the things that's important when we discuss these, particularly in public forums, is trying to help community members understand what we can gain from this, what we can learn from it, what we can't. I think what we can learn from it is that the Commonwealth has made a decision, and a consensus has formed, is this is how we're going to attack these issues. These are the benchmarks that we're going to measure ourselves by. We can't, there's no PowerPoint, and this is an excellent PowerPoint, it's very informative, but there isn't a PowerPoint that can truly convey the message as to why you should enroll your children in the Attleboro schools. If we had that PowerPoint available, you know, we would start every meeting with it. That PowerPoint doesn't exist. I think that's, that needs to be noted, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I think Massachusetts gets it right in that it's holding, it's setting high standards.
Yep.
High standards is the key ingredient. We're pushing ourselves, and by pushing ourselves, we go farther than we thought was possible. I mean, as a person who was an educator in the nineties, when we converted over to MCAS, I mean, the hysteria about how, you know, kids couldn't do it, and, you know, we're going to be massive failures, and, you know, this group can't do this, and this group can't do this, and that all proved not to be true. And as a result, our kids are doing much better than the rest of the country. So I think that we're setting high standards is instructive. But I don't think we should allow ourselves to punish ourselves at the fact that, you know, if you're going to set yourself, set high goals, you're not always going to reach them all the time.
Right.
And you need, it's the act of pushing yourself that really makes the difference, not, you know, whether you've got a seventy-four or a seventy-five.
Mrs. Storrs. You touched on it before, like with AYP, after fourteen years, everybody was supposed to be a hundred. And that, I think everybody agreed that was, although laudable, unrealistic, fair statement?
Yes.
Can't you say the same thing with what they've transferred to now? Ultimately, a hundred percent, a hundred percent, we'd love it, but it's unrealistic. Isn't that correct?
Well, a wise man once told me that a standard that a hundred percent of the people can reach is not a meaningful standard.
Fair enough. So I always felt that we should, for all of our subgroups, for everything, create our own standard as far as for this meeting, not just what the state thinks we should do based on cutting it by fifty percent, but what we feel is minimally acceptable and really a goal, and use that as our target for everything, from ELL to special education to Hispanic and English language. Look, create our own goals for each grade. I don't know your thoughts on that.
That makes a lot of sense. The only thing is that, just like, you know, with the other things we talked about, you shouldn't put too much stock in that either because, again, when you get the results back, you're talking about a different group of kids who took a different test. And so, you know, how meaningful is that number? I mean, when this year, the results go up by a lot, is that because we did a fantastic job? Or is it because the group of kids who took the test just happened to be better at taking that test for any one of a number of reasons? You know, when the population you're assessing isn't the same, isn't consistent, the assessment results, you know, have problems. But that, which is why, I mean, we can create our own assessment regime, or we can live with this one. Either way, we've got to put whatever results we get into a context. But, you know, on a teacher level and on a school level, we do exactly what you're talking about. The school improvement plans, the goals that educators set in their educator plans, they set those individual thoughtful targeted goals. And again, it's less about reaching them than it is about the effort that goes into it and what's learned as a result of it.
Thanks.
So I wanted to put this into a broader perspective. So I went onto the DART, which you know is the tool that the state produces to provide all kinds of valuable information to districts. And in the DART, you can pick comparable communities. So if you go in, you tell, you know, what district you are, and the DART identifies ten other communities that they, that the state claims are statistically most like you. I believe they're basing it on a number of factors, but they include the size of the district and the demographics of the district. So in Attleboro, by the way, that list of ten communities changes from year to year. As communities change, I know that every year, there's a couple of communities that get added to the list that weren't there before, and a couple that drop off.
We can't shake Lemonster, though. Everything.
Yeah, some of them are always there. So these are our communities. You know, it's Attleboro and ten others. It's Cambridge, Framingham, Lemonster, Marlboro, Medford, Methuen, Peabody, Pittsfield, Waltham, and Westfield. So the question I wanted to ask myself was, okay, if those are our comparable districts, let's take a look at how they do. And I used a rough measure, which the state produces, called the overall Massachusetts District Achievement Rank. The state takes the results of all the districts, their overall results, and they create a rank out of an index that they create. I believe what they do is they take the achievement results for English, Math, and Science, and they multiply that times three. And then they take the growth score, and they multiply that times one, they add them together and divide by four. And then from that index that they've created, they rank every district in the Commonwealth from one to two-ninety-two. But they rank them from lowest to highest. So number one is what you don't want to be, and two-ninety-two is the best in terms of achievement for the Commonwealth. So again, the state produces this ranking. I use that ranking as a way of just measuring very quickly the different communities in the DART. I also looked at, using the DART, how much those communities spend per pupil for their schooling. And when you chart those two against each other, so over here, we have per-pupil expenditure. You'll notice most of them are in the twelve-to-fourteen-thousand-dollar range. This is from FY-12, which is the last year that we have final data on. There isn't more, there isn't more recent data than that. So in FY-12, these communities were spending between twelve and fourteen. Yeah, you had one that was spending sixteen, I think that's Framingham. Over here, we've got one that's more like nineteen, was that Waltham? And then Cambridge, which, you know, I mean, in many respects, Cambridge is on its own planet. They're spending twenty-seven thousand dollars per pupil. So that's how much they're spending.
It's not the only way. They're on their own planet, but that's really a different story.
Yeah, that was the joke. This, though, is the rank. You'll notice one, Methuen, is on the bad side of the line. That's the bottom ten percent in the state. And then a bunch of them are clustered here. And then you'll notice, you know, Cambridge is over here, just over one-ten, and Attleboro is one-nineteen. And what I like about this graph is that, if you notice, of the eleven districts that are identified by the state as, you know, Attleboro and its ten similar districts, Attleboro spends the least per pupil out of the whole set and has the highest results. I think that this community should take great pride in its schools because it gets a tremendous value for the dollar it spends on its schooling.
No, I mean, I think that I can see why you've saved that slide for last. I mean.
I told you, I was building up to my dramatic.
I appreciate that. We started, that long-lost inflection finally came back. But, I mean, to have, and it's not just that the district is ranked first in that group. I mean, it's ranked first by a considerable amount from, according to that information. I mean, Cambridge is the closest, it looks like, but it's, again, Cambridge is the outlier, so.
The other districts that are in our league spend a considerable amount more.
Yep. Mr. Withers.
Yeah, thank you, and this is the slide that, I mean, stuck out to me when I was reviewing this today. You know, I had a lot of thoughts. I mean, it's just, it's staggering. I mean, really, this should be on the front page of the Sun Chronicle. So, you know, the community should see, one, how good the schools are doing, and also to let the public know that we don't spend a lot of money on education in this city. And I think there's a misconception about that. It's, you know, it's sad to look at this, you know, in one sense, and see that we're spending less than all these other communities. It's not like we're looking at the wealthiest communities in the state. I mean, these are, our city is just like us, and there's no reason we should be at the bottom of this list. That's, it's really unacceptable as far as I'm concerned. But that being said, even with that amount, I mean, look at how good the teachers are doing, our administration is doing. And it really should be a point of pride to them. It should also, I would think, be evidence that, you know, any suggestion that this district or administration or company, you know, can't manage the funds for the district is absolutely ridiculous because this proves it, you know, lock, stock, and barrel right there.
Mrs. Storrs. The two-ninety-two, does that include private schools?
No, these are public.
Okay, public only. And as far as the per-pupil, does that include state funding, IDA, or is that just?
I'm not exactly sure how the state calculates that per pupil, but that's, I mean, right out of the, if you go to the DESI website and bring up the finance tab on the school profiles, that's the public number that the state gives. They actually calculate it a couple of different ways.
That won't include IDA. That's not grant funding, that's great.
All right, that's what I wanted to verify. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
It's just a staggering number. I mean, to think that we're doing as well as we are with the difference in the value.
Yeah, and the, as.
I mean, it's a huge compliment to the people running the buildings and in the buildings and.
The teachers make up the difference.
It's huge, yeah.
I think it's a huge compliment to our student body, and Jack and his peers, and our parents. Who, without the parents and the teachers in collaboration with each other, you don't get results like that.
It's a great job.
I agree, and I think that for this school committee, because we have the most public of the platforms involved in the schools, it's really incumbent upon us to develop ways to more effectively communicate the difference that the teachers are making and that the schools are making in the lives of the families and the students in the community. You know, if you were to take that chart and just hang it out, hang it up around the community, there would be some questions as to exactly what it means. But we've got to do a better job of developing a narrative that is associated with the school system so that way people understand just how far the school system has come and the degree to which it's poised for further growth.
I would also note that, with the exception of Medford, all of those other districts are level-three districts.
Right. Which, again, we do go back to the double-edged sword in that because we can point to the flaws in the ways in which districts are evaluated, we can't close our eyes and pretend that this is a flawless system, and this is, you can put all your faith in that. On the other hand, when you're finishing first, you generally don't want to get in too big of an argument about the rules, so. But, so anyway, thank you.
All right, so when we take a look at the results, what are the areas of need? Well, certainly, science, I mean, whether we bring in more help or not, we need to prioritize science, and we are. I mean, we're making some strides in working science into the elementary curriculum and to also beef up our efforts in both middle and high school. Grade five, ELA, I mean, we've, this is not a new story, but we continue to focus on it. And while I do think that the transition is a big part of that story, wherever we pick the transition, that's got to be the area of focus. And we need to figure out a way to not lose ground as a result of moving kids when we do. As you saw in our accountability slide, all our subgroups need attention. There's not a group we can't identify that we don't need to make sure that we're giving all of our attention to. And then for all of them, we need to work on targeted interventions. The easy fixes are well past us at this point. There's no more things that we can do that are just simple and, you know, we used to refer to them as low-line fruit, right? It's all been, it's all been gobbled up. So now we have to be very targeted in what we choose to do. We have to find things that really get at the person or people who have the needs. Because just taking a scattered approach isn't going to get us where we need to be. So for, oh, well.
Mr. Fun.
I have a comment on the science. The whole idea of bringing the science into the elementary schools, I think that's an awesome idea because when I was in elementary school, I, we didn't have much stress on the science. It was math, it was English, and that's what it was basically all every day. But I think, so when I went into middle school, we were introduced to science. But I think that was, it's never too bad to introduce it earlier. So the younger you introduce science, maybe that'll show some improvement in the scores.
I couldn't agree more. Appreciate that. All right, so next steps, well, we have to, I mean, we're scratching the surface on the data. There's mountains and mountains of it, so we will dig in and continue to figure out what it's telling us and use it to make those targeted interventions that I made reference to. We'll be doing goal-setting, teachers, administrators, teams of people. We all need to create goals that will help us to address what the data is telling us. We'll be creating district improvement plans, a district improvement plan from the data. We'll also be doing school improvement planning, both implementing the plans this year, using the data, and then using the data to help us to, you know, hone our thinking about for next year's plans. And then, as always, this all comes back down to instruction. You know, the single most important factor in student achievement is the quality of the teaching. So whatever we can do to improve instruction will make the greatest difference. So, uh, whatever we can do to improve instruction will make the greatest difference.
Thank you. I know we've, we've sort of taken questions throughout the presentation, but are there any other, uh, final questions? Mrs. Tyler?
Yeah, just a quick question. Why did the state determine not the test, not grade? What's the rationale behind this?
Uh, let me think about that. Um, you know, I, I think I want to know the answer to that, but I am, it's escaped from me right now, it's been, I mean, it's been that way for so long, um, and I, I do not remember the reason for not testing at that grade. Although, under, uh, the next-generation testing, whether it's Parker's, I mean, Park has a ninth-grade test, but whether we do Park or not, the statement tends to move towards ninth. So that's probably the answer, part of the answer to the question, uh, the expense of it, um, to reduce the amount of tests they have to give. Um, that's, that's at least a piece of it.
I was thinking more of something that, because it's, it's too big of a transition from middle to a high school level.
Yeah, I think that's part of it as well, the idea of giving the high school two years to get the kids ready for the test. But that's why they didn't do it in eleventh grade, because then there's not enough time to deal with the kids that don't pass. So that's kind of why they picked tenth grade, so that there would be time to deal with the kids who, um, aren't successful. But, you know, I, why didn't they pick ninth? I think because they wanted to give the schools a chance to teach them up.
Because it's just my thought process, but fifth grade has always been a killer statewide, not just for us. And, and to me, it's almost like, I, I think part of the rationale, probably besides the money factor, too, is because it's too big of a transition from middle to high school. And I think, same thing happens at elementary and middle, but we, we're going to test that. And it's, it's nice to, that we pick it up in the sixth year, but it really takes your scores and brings them as a district-
Yeah.
-way down. And it's, it's a state trend, you know what I mean? So I, I wish they would actually look into that, because I think it's, I don't think that testing, uh, is getting the, uh, results or achievements at the statewide a lot of it. All it does seem to bring things down, that's all.
Any other questions or, or comments? Okay, well, again, I do want to thank, uh, the administration for, um, all the work that went into the presentation, and, and certainly even more so, the, the entire staff and, um, instructional leadership and teachers throughout the district who have helped, um, make those results, uh, possible, as we've said. Um, it, it may be only one meeting a year where this is a focal point and, and we're discussing it at length, um, but it certainly, uh, is related, I wouldn't say it's the core of what the district does, but it's, it's related, um, to, uh, to, to our core responsibilities and making sure that we're continuing to make progress and continuing to, to be a district that focuses on teaching and learning. Um, I, I, I did purposely put our next item on the agenda because I think they play off each other nicely, and I think it helps us, um, to really view the school system as the multi-dimensional organization that it is. So, uh, at this point, we're going to move on, uh, and ask Mr. Rooney, Mrs. Hickox, and Miss Little to, to join the committee for a discussion on the Guidance Department.
Okay. She wants it back.
I'd like to read. She just didn't like to read. I think it just seems-
So, again, as, as I said, um, I wanted, uh, and I know the high school administration, maybe everybody else around here, uh, gets tired of, um, my Guidance Department soapbox, uh, but, oh, well, uh, because I'm, I'm going to get back on it again. Um, the reason that I thought it was important, one, the College and Career Fair is coming up this week, and so, uh, we're looking to, uh, to give the Guidance Department a plug and, and help promote it in that sense, but I think that historically, um, partly because this district has, um, shown so much improvement, uh, in the, the realm of student achievement, uh, that this, this committee and, at, at times, the administration, we've become too focused from a messaging standpoint, and this is going, or, I'm, I'm talking about over the last several years, uh, too focused from a messaging standpoint on defining our success by our improved test scores. Our, our test scores have improved dramatically, and it's evidence, as Mr. Storah said, uh, of the quality in, instruction that you see when you walk through the nine school buildings. But I do think one of the things that the school committee always needs to keep in mind, and the community needs to keep in mind, that ultimately, the tests are valuable because it helps us to evaluate how we are doing toward our principal objectives. And our principal objectives are to prepare students for what they're going to do next. And if that means if you're at the Early Learning Center, we are preparing you for elementary school, and if we're at, if you're at the elementary school, we're preparing you for middle school, and if you're at, so on and so forth. Uh, and nowhere, there, there's no group of individuals who are sort of more focused on that, on a day-to-day basis, as our Guidance Department is. And that's why, uh, Mrs. Little has heard me say this many times before, I believe she has the most important job, uh, certainly at the high school, I would say in the district, uh, because at the end of the day, everything else we do, every other department, should revolve around helping students prepare for whatever they are going to do next, and that is the chief responsibility of the Guidance Department. And so, uh, with that, I turn over to Mr. Rooney and his staff members to, to talk a little bit about the Guidance Department and the College and Career Fair coming up this week.
Thank you for having us, and, uh, you know, we, uh, did see the opportunity, um, on the heels of, uh, Subcommittee on Tuesday Night of last week, and also, uh, the fact that, as you mentioned, on Thursday, we do have, um, over a hundred colleges, um, agencies, um, branches of the military joining us, uh, for our, our College and Career Opportunities Fair on, um, on Thursday. Uh, we thought it would be a good opportunity for us to just, um, outline some of the aspects of the guidance services at the high school. I think it's important, um, to, first of all, note that, um, we are obviously a large school, we're close to, um, seventeen-hundred students, um, in terms of staff members who, um, are there also on a daily basis, it's a small city within a city, uh, of nearly two thousand people. And in order to be able to focus on as much personalization as possible, uh, the powers that be many years ago, uh, decided that we were going to go with a, a house office system. And I can tell you that, um, in my little over two years of being at the high school, I, I, I love the house office system, um, it, uh, it adds a, a tremendous amount of, um, personalization, it certainly helps in the transition, um, of middle school students who are coming from, um, environments that are about a third of the size of the high school, and, uh, helps them to identify with a dean, a guidance counselor, a secretary, um, that the communication is, is more consistent. And, uh, so, currently, uh, and, and it's also important to note that those, um, three houses are vertical, uh, so, in other words, when a student enters in the ninth grade, they stay there, um, through the twelfth grade, in most of those cases. Um, not all of our students are in those three houses, I'll explain that, um, in just a moment or so, but we, we average about five-hundred-and-fifty students per house. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, each house is staffed, um, by a dean, two guidance counselors, and a clerk, and, uh, as I mentioned, it does add to the personalization. Um, we're very proud of our staff, um, in each of the house offices, um, the, the three deans are, um, at least in their third year, um, as a team together, and, uh, again, we, we, um, we're, we're very fortunate to have, um, dedicated, uh, clerks who have been in these roles for a long period of time, and in many cases, um, are the go-to person in situations where we need the historical perspective on things. Uh, in Aspen, we do code other students as both House Four and House Five, uh, for our specialized programs, which include network and school within a school. So, in order to make sure that we have some oversight, um, from, uh, the service delivery of guidance services, uh, Mr. Andrew Perillo, who also serves as our scheduling coordinator, um, through the majority of the school year, he works on schedules for grades nine through twelve, but then, as we get closer to the spring, he also facilitates the eighth-grade schedules, uh, along with the administrative teams at the middle school level. He provides guidance services to school within a school. Mrs. Little, in a, in addition to serving as the guidance coordinator, uh, provides services, um, guidance services to our network students, and then also, we're very fortunate to have, um, another member of the Guidance Department, um, Ms. Becky Richard, who, um, teaches guidance-related curriculum throughout the day, college and career planning, community leadership, she's also in charge of the experiential learning program. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hickox.
So, as you can see, we like the idea with transition and communication, that guidance really begins in the middle schools, and if not sooner. Bill and Julie just came back from visiting all three middle schools with every seventh and eighth grader, um, you know, giving age-appropriate message, seventh graders just starting to instill blue pride and getting involved in the importance of, you know, starting to think about things and, um, letting them know what we do offer up at the high school. With the eighth graders, um, a little more intensive about what you do now has a direct effect on, on where you're going, your, um, your conduct, your academics, your attendance, and that's when we start to have that conversation about prerequisites with them, that, you know, what you get now is going to affect what your choices in going forward, and we want to start thinking about a plan and what choices are going to fit that plan.
And that, and that's more true now than it has been in the past, and I think that's important to note. Um, does anyone from the administration want to comment on sort of how, how effective are we in terms of getting that message out there? I know it's one that we, we're going to have to continue to beat that drum, because this is a significant change from, even from last year to this year, are they-
The, what, what changed?
Prerequis.
Oh, the prereqs, yep. Um, again, um, as Jean said, we, we try to, to modify the presentation ever so slightly with grade seven and grade eight-
Yep.
But, um, Julie and I talked to every one of those students about the, the prerequisites, and, um, you know, really, you know, I, I commend everybody who is involved in that process for getting the prerequisites in place because of the fact that, um, it just, it, it helps, it just helps keep, uh, the student's eye on the, on the prize in terms of performing at the highest level possible.
And are we comfortable that we're getting that message conveyed, uh, effectively to families as well? In terms of our, our, and I know there's no middle school administrators here right now, but-
But they were part, they were part of the team that helped put it together, and, uh, so they're very sensitive to, um, getting the message out there.
It was communicated at their, um, curriculum nights-
Yeah.
What was that, two weeks ago?
Yep.
I, I know that they are prioritizing that as part of their communication with parents.
That's my understanding as well, and I, I just, I just make note of it because I don't think we should, we can't skip over just how significant that, that change is.
And I think it's part of this ongoing communication, it's just, not just one presentation. Um, at this time, they also tell them, you know, the other guidance services that they will find once they come into these small house offices, and the fact that they'll have a guidance counselor, hopefully for four years. Um, spring, summer is more, uh, focused on scheduling and that conversation, and that, that really does roll right through the summer. Um, in fact, I think this summer, we had somebody there every Wednesday as a help desk.
A help desk every Wednesday-
Yep.
For scheduling changes, scheduling questions.
Um, and then, really, if you look at the bottom of the slide, it, the idea that we're trying to get is a mindset of admissions. It's no secret that we're trying to attract from the neighborhood school, the, the surrounding schools, we want to bring as many kids into this school and expose them to what we think is a great place with a lot of opportunity. Um, Julie and several students have put together a student ambassador team, and they have different roles along the way. If a brand-new student came in today, these, this team would assign somebody to the new student and all that. Last year, they gave quite a few tours, let kids, uh, shadow them, and I think of note, something to be noted is that one-hundred percent of the kids that came and participated in these tours from, say, Foxborough Charter or Fian ended up coming to Attleboro High School. So I think, you know, once they're here and they see what we've got to offer and they meet the kids that are here, which is a significant part of it. And in the summer, of course, we have our family orientation, which is also primarily student-run, after we do our spiel up on the stage, we try to keep that limited and then let the students sort of show them around and, you know, so get them ready for that first day.
Excellent. Thank you, Jean. Um, so some of the things that I'm going to talk about are specific to certain grades, uh, but there are some things that we do, uh, that span all grades. And one of the things that's really important to guidance is communication. Um, we feel that it's very important to reach out to students, to parents, to teachers, the Attleboro community, um, and we do that in a variety of different ways. Um, we think it's very important to, uh, get the word out, uh, through the Pride Post, uh, through our daily announcements, so every day, we, we say the different colleges or military or different opportunities that are coming. Um, Twitter has been very successful, um, we do targeted emails, uh, Mr. Rooney's very good about including us in the Pride Cast and the Pride Post, so there's a lot of different ways that we feel we need to communicate our message. Uh, people know, need to know what's going on, and so, that is definitely our concerted effort. We also want to reach out to students, um, we think that's extremely important, and there's not one particular way we do that. Uh, we definitely have individual meetings, we have group meetings, um, last year, we tried house meetings by grade, and we thought that they were very successful, so we actually included that again this year, um, we will continue to do that. Um, we have after-school sessions with students when we see there's a need, so there's various different things depending on, um, the need that we try, and, um, we're, we're constantly looking at our practice, looking at different ways we can reach students and families, uh, that's how summer hours came about, we saw that there was a need, uh, a lot of, a lot of students have questions over the summer about transition and classes and, um, I'm, I'm sure prerequisites, um, uh, going forward. So, um, so those are the kinds of things that, um, we're, we're definitely responding to.
Well, do we have any sense as to sort of the volume of customers you got over the summer?
I have to say-
Was this the first summer, or?
We did it the summer before, but not as much, yeah.
Okay.
This particular summer, every single appointment on Wednesdays, they were packed.
Really?
And after each appointment, um, the, the guidance counselors would, would reach out to me and just say, you know, it was, it was, it was amazing, and they were, they were booked all day, um, people waiting, I mean, there was def, a definite need, and I think, you know, I'd, I'd like to do it again, I thought, I thought it worked very, very well.
Was there an uptick from the volume you saw the summer before?
Oh, oh, without a doubt, without a doubt, and one of the-
Just to people knowing about it and greater communication about it, or?
We definitely communicated that, um, at the end of the school year, uh, we got the message out, and one of the things that I, I felt worked really well is that the beginning of school, I thought, was, was very smooth.
Okay.
In the past, we had-
And with regard to guidance, at least?
With, with, um-
That's a different story.
Um, well, in the past, we had lines in the guidance office wanting to change schedules, um, this year, we, we didn't have that. I, uh, Jean and I walked around to every house office and, you know, it was, it was, it was very quiet and orderly, so, um, you know, that was, that was good news. Obviously, there's always going to be some changes, but, um, really, I, I felt they were minimal, so I thought-
Diverse amongst grade levels, or, in terms of people that were coming in, or more concentrated in the upper grades?
It, it was, it was really diverse, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we did have new students that came in, but, um, and we took some of those appointments, but primarily-
It's a little bit of everything.
-spanned all grades.
Okay. So, I just, I don't want to, like, get too hung up on summer office hours, but I do think that this is one of the examples as to why the school committee needs to know about some of the innovative practices that the Guidance Department, uh, is undertaking, because it may be the case that, well, if we're going to be a guidance-driven district, that that's something that the, the committee wants to be aware of and ultimately invest in to make sure that we can expand those services and find a way to make sure that every student. I, I have a hard time believing that there's a single student at Attleboro High School, perhaps, in the Attleboro School District, who wouldn't benefit from meeting, maybe with family, maybe without family, with a guidance counselor at some point over the summer. It is, it's a time when people are hopefully taking a breath, they're not hung up on whatever is due the next day, and that might be the, the type of sort of systemic practice that we want to, to try to expand. I don't know that that's something that we can do, I don't know that's something we would do, but it's, it's why we have to have these conversations, so.
And I, I think it's important that, um, you know, past practice was that, um, the guidance counselors would be in the building before the teachers, um, but, you know, when, um, Julie came on board in her new role, when Jean came on board in her new role and was working directly with guidance, especially with, you know, student services, um, they said that they would like to carve into some of that time that was normally reserved for August twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, in that timeframe, um, and spread it out throughout the summer so that, you know, we could try to alleviate some people's concerns and make schedule changes and, and to make things, um, more smooth. So, I, I give them all the credit for being innovative enough to, you know, modify it, and, and the, the counselors, who are the ones that, you know, saw their pure office time reduced by this change, um, you know, accepted it willingly, and I think are reaping the benefits at the, at the start of the school year with this, with a smoother opening.
Right. Mrs. Larson?
Just going back to the other slide, I mean, I think it's so important, and I think it's great that you guys are reaching out to the middle school-
you know, accepted it willingly and I think are reaping the benefits at the, at the start of the school year with a, with a smoother opening.
Right. Ms. Larson?
Just going back to the other slide, I mean, I think it's so important, and I think it's great that you guys are reaching out to the middle schools and just, I think the sooner they get in the loop of the high school's communication, especially in seventh and eighth grade, you know, it might not be, you know, part of their daily lives yet, but just so they start to see the calendar of the high school and they start to see the different things that are available at the high school. Because once they get here, I mean, it's four years, but it goes by so quick. So that if they can start thinking about it, even in seventh grade, listening to your.
I think.
Getting your emails and getting the Twitters and, and the rest of it. I mean, there's so much information that they just need to get in the habit of hearing about so that when they're finishing their eighth grade in middle school, they're already ready for it. And, um, because there's just so much information out there, and I, I think you guys do a great job of making that, all, all that information available. So it's our job as parents at that point to take advantage of it and make sure that they're listening.
The middle school teams are extremely accommodating. I mean, they, you know, the, the teachers, they're so kind, they stop what they're doing, they allow us to have, you know, seven, eight minutes and.
Oh, I agree. I think you guys are doing what you need to do, I guess. We as parents need to make sure that we're listening. And, and we need to get in the habit of, even though maybe we're in middle school, we need to start listening to what the high school's telling us, so.
So moving on to ninth grade, we feel ninth grade is a very, very important year, definitely setting the foundation. And we want to make sure that we're working on transitional issues with them. We want to make sure that they, I mean, they're academically sound, but their, that their other needs are taken care of as well. Sometimes freshmen, you know, they're, they're a little stressed when they first come. So we want to make sure that we, we assess the problem and we help them quickly. Sometimes it's a matter of, I don't have anyone to sit with at lunch. Sometimes they don't know where their bus is. These are, these are quick things and, and easy things that we can help with, and we have a lot of plans in place. But, but transition is, is a big thing from eighth grade to ninth grade. One of the things that we recently did was in advisory, we gave the freshmen a questionnaire. And we asked them, you know, what questions do you still have? Because sometimes we find if they write things down, they'll be very honest. And so we, we take that feedback and then we roll it back out because we're having freshman groups right now. So it's, it's just, it's just interesting, the different things that are on their mind, and it just helps us do a better job because again, some people feel more comfortable writing some things down. But those are the kinds of things that we work on. Sometimes they're having difficulty in a class, so we help them get a tutor. Organizational issues, sometimes those backpacks aren't quite full, we help them with that. You know, those are the things that we do the freshman year. Obviously, setting the foundation for later on, and it's in that year that we want to start those four-year plans. That's gonna be very, very important to us going forward. So that's something that, you know, obviously, we know that many students aren't going to come to us from the eighth grade with plans. So it's our job to, to make sure that they have a plan and that we reassess that plan every year.
And I think just one other aspect of ninth grade that, as far as the guidance service delivery is concerned, is that three years ago, when the exploratory for all program through CTE became a reality, the, the fact that our guidance counselors are teaching a block to their caseload of students builds a relationship right off the bat between the guidance counselor and the student. They focus on organizational skills and, you know, self-advocacy, time management. And so, you know, again, that's, you know, our guidance counselors in the last couple of years have taken a proactive approach to, you know, changing what their day-to-day existence looked like from the standpoint that, you know, they were not in a classroom for 65 minutes delivering curriculum to students. They were in their office, maybe working on individual appointments or, you know, recommendations, things like that. So again, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of how they've, you know, how they've assimilated with that situation.
I, I would just be curious, as I, I agree, I mean, I think that, I mean, I agree in the sense that this, I'm talking about something I don't know nothing about, but the, the concept, that was one of the principal reasons that the previous committee made the transition that we did from a scheduling standpoint. It was one of the benefits that, that the administration had explained to us. I think that, I would be curious, I'm sure that that is part of what's being communicated to the middle school communities, that this is gonna be a class that's gonna be available, so that way they can sort of mentally prepare for that. I would also be curious, because again, this is, I think the junior class is the class that was enrolled in the program.
Starting.
First time, correct? So I would be curious, maybe this is something that, that Mr. Flynn and his group could, could work on, if we were to do some student-focused groups to get a sense as to what impact it's had and what maybe areas that they would like to see explored in greater detail, that might be something that we would want to hear.
Well, I can say from experience, during the exploratory rotation, we did go through a week with the guidance, and I, I did find that very useful. Because that did, it got, it was the ability to let the students become like closer, more personal to their guidance counselors.
Yep.
Which is important because for a freshman coming into this massive building, for them to have the courage to go up to a guidance counselor and talk to them one-on-one, that's, it's low percentage, it's.
Okay.
The fact that they, they were able to be in a classroom environment and up close and personal with their guidance counselors, like in a class setting.
Sure.
That was, I found that useful, and that was.
That's good.
A good experience.
So that, like I said, that might be something that we want to follow up with you on, and if we could get some, some notes and some, maybe even some constructive criticisms, that might be helpful, so, thank you.
And moving right along to grade 10, so we are going to follow up with that plan, revisit the plan, make some adjustments if, if necessary. We also do quite a bit with testing during the sophomore year. So right now, PSATs, if, if you're in the building, you're hearing about PSATs, because guidance does take the lead in the PSATs. So all of our sophomores will, will take the PSATs. Jean and I help organize that. But there are other kinds of things that, that we start talking to them about, getting involved. If a student hasn't gotten involved, that's where we roll out the, the different ideas that are available. We get a chance to really know the students at that point. What are their interests? Would you like to volunteer? So those are the kinds of things that we really work on during the sophomore year. Also, leadership, that's when HOBE comes into play, the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference. And so we're, we're very fortunate, we were able to send two representatives last year, and again, we're, we're able to send someone this year. So we talked to the sophomores about that last week in our assembly. So again, we will be spearheading that. We also always support MCAS, and during the, during the sophomore year, we, we begin talking about the dual enrollment opportunities. There are freshmen that certainly do dual enrollment, and of course, we, we do talk to them during scheduling and throughout the year. But it tends to be those sophomores, after they have some, some more courses under the belt, that they begin thinking about dual enrollment and some of the other opportunities that are available. So again, we want to make sure that if that's the case, that they're going to be taking the Accuplacer exam, which is the, the test that's required to go on to dual enrollment.
Mrs. Scales has a question.
Just quick, how is the, that leadership conference paid for? I know how some of the other ones are paid for, how is that one paid for?
Gifts and donations.
Gifts and donations, okay.
You mentioned that in the subcommittee, that the HOBE, we had not participated in the HOBE conference for some time. Do you, any idea how long a stretch of time?
Julie and I brought it back last year, but I don't know how long it's been since.
A few.
Okay.
I can't remember it.
Maybe four or five years, it, it had been a while.
Okay, I, okay, thank you.
And one of the things with HOBE that's, that we had asked is that they, they kind of hit it forward. And one of the nice things is that we did have the PSAT assembly the other day for sophomores, and both of our students came back and talked about their experiences, and, I mean, they, they, they had a wonderful time. Both of them are, are definitely student leaders in our school, so it was nice that they would come back and, and really talk about their, their experiences. The junior year is a very busy year. So if any of you have juniors in your house, you know it's very exciting, lots of, it's, it's just a busy year. So the one thing that, that is exciting, and Jack had talked about this earlier, the career visits, the college and career visits. As a junior, you can start participating. So we do have a number of visits that, that have been very successful this year. UConn, for example, was in last week, I don't know, I think you were there, yep. There were 90 students there. So I have to tell you, the, the students are there and they're, we're getting rave reviews from the admission counselors. So I think that that, that speaks volumes about our students, it really does. So we're very excited about that, and those visits will continue throughout the year. Obviously, we want to have some, some diversity in there, so as they contact us, or sometimes we, we contact them, we're, we're very much open to visits. Also, I know we, we discussed the College and Career Fair at the beginning, and definitely, this is open to juniors and seniors. And so I'm just gonna jump into that for a minute. One of the things that I think is very exciting about this week, we are all really excited in the guidance department. First of all, it was, it was a fair that we looked at and we said, okay, you know what, what can we do differently? We have been doing a college fair forever, and it was a college fair. And we, we looked at our students and we looked at our needs and we said, you know what, we have to rename this because the college fair doesn't say it all. So we, we renamed it to the College and Career Fair, and we started reaching out to different, different offices. You know, again, this is a work in progress, so hopefully next year we'll have even more. But I'm very proud of the fact that we definitely have colleges represented, we have the military represented, and we have different agencies represented.
Civil services.
So it's so very proud that, to hear that the police department are coming, the fire department are coming, civil services. So I think it's really exciting for the students. And as Mr. Rooney had said at the subcommittee, committee meeting, we, we started off with two cafeterias and now we're, we're at three different cafeterias. So it's, it's, it's a very large event, but I think it's going to be very exciting.
I'm excited for that.
I am too. The other thing that I think is important to note, and last week we talked about articulation agreements. Because we have articulation agreements with a number of, of schools through our CTE department. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that we, if possible, that we got those particular schools there. So Central Maine Community College, they're coming. We definitely have an articulation agreement with them. New England Tech, they're coming, and again, we have an articulation agreement with them. Ben Franklin, Bristol Community College. So I think for us, that's very exciting, and for our students, you know, I, I think it's nice for them to all be there and for the students to know that their credits could potentially transfer there. And then the third thing that I just want to mention is that we listen to feedback from our regional college fair. We felt that the regional college fair was, was, was a large fair, not as large as this, but, but it was, it was, it was a good start for us to kind of reassess our practices. And we always, we always give a survey to the colleges, and one of the things that they said to us was, we would like to see you partner with someone. Because if you are, if we're coming to Attleboro and we're, you know, in the area, it would be, it would benefit us to partner with another school. And so we kind of put some feelers out there, and we, we did partner with another school in Rhode Island, so we're, we're very, very proud of that, of that relationship. So they're coming to us in the morning and, and to the other school in the afternoon. So, you know, again, we're, we're listening to the feedback, we're constantly assessing our practices, which I think we absolutely need to do. Other things that happen during junior year, obviously testing. So again, PSATs, diagnosis, yes, we, and then, you know, again, in the spring, we're, we're going to be doing SATs, TOEFL. That is definitely something that we're, we're targeting. The Accuplacer exam, again, for dual enrollment. All different kinds of testing opportunities for students, so that's something that we absolutely promote. We absolutely will be looking at our four-year plan again. That's something that we will do throughout the year, but definitely in that junior interview, which would be happening in the spring. We have Junior Parent Night, which also happens in the spring, we're, we're having that in March this year. And we always invite parents to that. I think that that's awesome, if the parents can come to that. And then again, the Junior Parent Night in the spring, where we kind of go over the process, we can, we begin brainstorming about the following year. And junior parents are always invited to our Financial Aid Night. It happens to be for seniors, but we felt that sometimes exposing them to some of the things that are happening the next year is, is helpful. Another point I'd just like to, to point out, NCAA check-ins, very important. Anyone who has a college, a potential college athlete, it's critical to do those check-ins during junior year. So we want to make sure that our students are academically successful, but also can, can certainly play at the college level. So we, we definitely, we've, we've done a lot around the NCAA. And then moving on to 12th grade, I think most seniors can tell you they see their guidance counselor probably daily at that point. That's what we hope and that's what we like, but some, you know, some, some students like that, where they come in every day and some perhaps every week, and others, we, you know, we have appointments with and we, we certainly do our check-ins with them. But the, the senior year is very busy. Certainly, when we start off, we have Senior Parent Night, that was a very well-tended night. So we were pretty happy about that. Again, seniors are doing the college visits, they're, they're showing up in full force, they're looking forward to the college fair. And again, we're looking at those four-year plans. We want to make sure that everyone that graduates is successful, so we're, we're looking into that for sure. Senior interviews are something that we absolutely do, they begin, they're ongoing right now. Anyone who has a very early deadline obviously sees us very early, but everyone has that, that check-in with their guidance counselor. Again, we invite parents to that, we always welcome that. One of the things that we're very, very proud of this year is that we're going to be a host site for MIFA's College Goal Sunday. And this is something that goes back to last year at our Financial Aid Night. MIFA comes in every year and presents to us. It's, it's usually very well attended, and last year, Mr. Carrillo and I were there and we said, boy, as they, as they were talking about MIFA College Goal Sunday, we would like to do something like that. Wouldn't that be great if Attleboro was a host site? And basically what that is, just to kind of, you know, give you some more information about that. For years, we sent our students to these locations throughout Massachusetts. It's always the Sunday before the Super Bowl. And they went off to the various different locations, but the greatest thing about that day is that they could get an individual appointment with a financial aid professional, and for free, they would do their FAFSA. That is huge, because one of the things that we want to make sure is that, I think we do a very good job with the college process and students are, are accepted to a wide variety of schools. Sometimes in the end, they can't attend those schools, perhaps due to financial aid. And so one of the things that, that we feel is that if we have onsite financial aid, that's certainly going to help our students. So we're delighted that we were chosen as a, as a host site, and the administration was extremely supportive of the idea, and we found out about a month ago that we were selected. So we will be rolling that out very soon, we'll be emailing it and, yeah, on Twitter and.
It'll be in Jan- January?
In January.
January. Do we know the date or?
I believe it's January 25th, literally, right before the Super Bowl.
You said it's on a Sunday, correct?
Correct, yes, yes. Yes, and the.
So the bye week.
The bye week, yep.
Oh, great.
Yes, exactly. So it's, that's, I mean, to us, we were so excited to get that because I think that, you know, it's certainly going to help our, our families in Attleboro, it will help out other families in Massachusetts for sure. But the fact that they believed in, in Attleboro and they chose us is, I mean, that says a lot for, for the high school.
But it wouldn't have happened though had you not pursued it, and I think that.
And I think that the entire committee is grateful to you and the high school administration for recognizing the value that that would have for the community and taking the initiative to go out and do it. It's certainly something that we'll have follow-up conversations about. If there's anything we can help do to help promote it, you know, certainly.
Thank you.
Want to partner with you for that. And hopefully it doesn't snow that day.
I know, I know, seriously.
Hope I don't get blamed for it.
The snow date is not on the Super Bowl, I promise you. So I just wanted to wrap it up with guides today. One of the things that I think is very, very important is that we know that services are for all students. We keep that in mind in every single thing that we do. There are some great new things that we've tried over the past year. One of which was the Opportunities Fair, where we partnered with the Office of Special Education and School to Career Office. That brought some wonderful opportunities in January. We had Electric Boat here, we had colleges, we had the military. And we were really hoping to increase that again for this coming year. I thought it was, we started off small, but I thought it was successful. But we're hoping to certainly grow that. We definitely are career-focused. We want to make sure that our students are graduating, that they have solid plans. That, again, we're revisiting those plans every single year. We're absolutely committed to that. We feel also that we need to develop relationships with colleges, the military, with other agencies. And I think that one of the things that, you know, that we see is that they're approaching us this year. And I think that that's really exciting to see. When UConn contacts me and says, you know, can I come for a visit? Yes, you know, we're very excited to have you. But it's nice when they call us. And believe me, we do a lot of outreach. But it's nice that, I think, we're developing some nice relationships with certain colleges. I think we're using technology much more than we did in the past. We do a lot of targeted emails out to our students and parents. Again, the Twitter. And just trying to make data-driven decisions. We're constantly looking at what we do and looking for ways of making it better. And we always appreciate feedback and we really do take that in and try to make it better. Also, I would just like to mention Alumni Day was something that was really, really important to us this year. We started off, I think, small. But next year, you know, we're hoping to make it even bigger. One of the nice things is that the students that did come back want to help organize it for this coming year. So I think we have a lot of things going on, but we're, again, we're constantly looking at new things and ways we can do things more efficiently.
Thank you. And I'm glad that you sort of closed on the note with regard to Alumni Day. Because I think that helps illustrate the point that it is the guidance department more so than any other dimension of the high school and of the district that stays with students from the time before they're at high school, hopefully eventually through the high school, and then ultimately is the connection between the institution and that network of alumni who hopefully will, in the years ahead, take a greater role in helping our current students.
Quick question. Who services the students who stay until they're twenty-two, like those in like the twelve-plus program? Like, which house do they stay with or?
We would all, depending on the guidance counselor, it could be Ms. McDonald, it could be...
Wouldn't they stay with the guidance counselor they had all along?
Exactly.
Like, please?
They just stay with?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they're in House One, they stay in House One and they stay with that counselor.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Tyler?
I was just about to say, I agree with the chairperson earlier when he said, I'm glad to see the emphasis put back on the guidance department. It was certainly lacking over the last maybe ten years that I remember. And it is nice to do all that testing, but where do we go from here? And how do we, as a district, make sure that we're, making sure that we are making our students all resources available for them? And so I'm very glad to see this. I know it was a huge problem years ago. And I can see through all the effort that you guys are putting in. And I like your willingness to adjust. If there's something new, if there's something that somebody's not utilizing, or how can we make it so they will utilize it, or a different field. So I just want to thank you very much for your presentation. It is where the emphasis is. I agree with the chair. I mean, we can, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink it. But we got to at least give him every available option to do so. So thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I'm just going to just make, go back to the other comment about communicating. I mean, there's so much that happens junior and senior year. I'm on my second trip through it. And it happens quick. And parents have to make sure they have found a way to stay engaged with their children's and their student's guidance department. Because there's so much information coming and they're going to be far better off hearing it twice than not hearing it at all. And I would just implore all of them to make sure they're finding those avenues and not waiting for pieces of paper to come home in backpacks.
Right. And Julie and her team, they're sending a lot out to parents as well. You know, as much as the kids get the weekly updates, the parents do too. And you're right, it's important. And we have some kids that are first generation. And, you know, they're going, literally going through this the first time. And so that takes a whole other, you know, team effort. So it's, it's a busy job.
So if Mr. Larson's going to implore the families, I'll implore the staff that, because I think we need to come at it from both angles at all times. And you're absolutely right. But if there's anything we can do at any level to help you to communicate, whether that's bolstering the current efforts or thinking of new ways in which we can reach the community at large, that's what we want to do. Because, again, I know to some extent maybe we sound like a broken record. But as Mr. Tyler said, this is a department that has evolved in a variety of ways for a very long time. And some of us probably remember that at one time it wasn't called the guidance department, it was called the Office of Graduate Opportunities.
OGO.
What's that?
OGO.
OGO, correct.
And we had, they weren't even called guidance counselors back in the day.
No, they were not.
Mr. Sawyer, what were they, teacher advisors?
Teacher advisors, yes. And so, you know, there are all different ways to approach it. And at the end of the day, the mission was largely the same. It was, I think, more of a communication effort to some degree. But every student is not going to be an English major. Every student is not going to be a mathematician. Every student is not going to be engaged at a high level with career and technical education. Every student does need to do something in the future. That's the one thing that cuts across every demographic, every population. And it's, this is the department that has to be the center of that. And so to what degree we as a district have to do things differently in order to prioritize that accordingly, that's frankly what we need to know from you. And so I just, I'd ask that you keep the communication channel open and continue to try to systematize the approach to guidance. Because I think that we saw a litany of activities and events, and I think that's great. But I think if you're just sort of looking through the list, you might think that this is a very busy department. And I'm sure that it is. But the important part is that those events are connected and that they're ultimately connected to what it is that we as a school district are trying to do, which is to prepare students for the future. So again, thank you. I'm sorry that, you know, you're going to get constantly called in front of the school committee, but there's a reason for it. It's because, it's because we want your work to be the focus of the school system. And we think it's the way in which our students will have the most opportunities after they leave us, so, which eventually they all do. So another thing they have in common, they all, eventually they all leave. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
We do appreciate the support.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, and we'll see you soon. I'm sorry. Last, what do families need to know for Thursday? Their kids are going to go. If you're a junior or senior, you're going to...
Yes. And in fact, tomorrow morning, we'll be sending out a parent email for juniors and seniors. And it will also go to all junior and seniors, the students as well. We don't have to sign up this year. The first forty-five minutes of the fair is devoted to the seniors. The last forty-five minutes would be devoted to the juniors. And so we have, it's quite an intricate system that we have this year because of the three cafeterias. So we have a map that we'll be giving out. We're actually going to be emailing out the list of all the colleges, agencies, and military tomorrow, so that the parents can view it, that the students can view it and kind of prepare. And then again, on that morning in advisory, they'll actually be getting a map. So they'll know which cafeteria.
Yeah. And I think what's important, like two things. One, walking through an event like that can be helpful to students. Because you're not staring at the same chalkboard that you would every day at eleven-thirty. You're walking through and you're seeing institutions that maybe you haven't heard of, or you're making those types of connections. The other thing is that, I'm sure this has been communicated, but nobody's getting accepted or hired this week. So, well, that's, I won't go down that road. But the point is, I think that we've got to emphasize this and I thank you for doing that.
Some may get accepted this week, at least in theory, because...
Standing in the cafeteria, I assume. I don't...
But if you make the right connection with the admissions counselor, you know. And one of the things that we just talked about today, and therefore we didn't have enough time to put it on the slide, is that we are, for the first time in quite a few years, sending probably fifty percent of the department to a Reverse College Day. Reverse College Day is where a bunch of colleges get together down in Newport. And then they host guidance counselors to come in. And what that does is it gives the guidance counselors an opportunity to go up to a table that is represented by a particular college or university. And guidance counselors can advocate for the acceptance of our students. So in years past, we have not been as committed to sending counselors to that. So we're going to send one counselor from each house. They'll collaborate before they go. And then, you know, the House One counselor can go to a list of different schools and, you know, say, you know, I'd like to show you, you know, Kimberly Rooney's profile and, you know, her involvement and, you know, her scores and her transcript. And, you know, what do you think her chances are of getting in?
Yeah. No, I think those are the types of partnerships we need to make. And, you know, we need to aggressively, I mean, just like we talk about marketing and promoting the school district and every other aspect, that's, to say that's a constituency we want to reach is an understatement. So. Mr. Larson?
Mr. Larson, I mean, you made a comment at Senior Night the other night that really kind of struck with me. If you could just briefly explain the importance of seeing each of one of the schools that you might possibly want to apply to. Because I know one of you were talking about, they keep track of you.
Oh, absolutely.
And the importance of that. If you could just briefly touch on that.
Absolutely. And I think this goes back to my college admissions days. So one of the things that we tell our students is that no matter where you go, and if anyone is talking to me and they say, you know, my son or daughter's going to whatever college or the military or whatever, I always say, did you arrange it through the admissions office? And the reason I say that is because admissions, there are many different, there are many talented students that are applying to various different colleges. And it's competitive. And so what they need to do is look at, okay, they want students that they know are very excited about them. So what they will do is every time a student will go to a college fair, for example, there are little cards that they can fill out. And so we always tell the students, fill out the cards, because that's a contact card. That will go into the computer. And then the next time, let's, okay, they'll be on the mailing list. Let's say there's a virtual online open house. Great. Jack attends the virtual online open house. He'll get another point in the system. Let's say Jack goes for an interview. Again, it's showing interest in the college. And colleges want students that want to be there. And so when it comes to committee, and I have a very good friend at Holy Cross. And so when he's doing his committee, they're looking at all the students. And they're great students. They're all going to be A students that are applying there. But what they have to do is say, okay, we can't admit all these great students, but what can we do? Well, let's say, okay, did Jack come and visit? No? Why didn't Jack visit? They want someone who is very excited. So if they have to make a phone call, sometimes they'll make acceptance phone calls. And they, they're, they want it to, they want on the other end to be as excited as they are making the phone call. And so they actually, they sign points in the computer. And so when they're reviewing applications, they look at all of this. And so if a student hasn't visited, that's a negative. Now, sometimes we know that a college is pretty far away. And sometimes they, you know, they're not going to hold that against you. But, you know, reach out is, we always tell the students that they should make the phone calls. That is key. So again...
As opposed to parents, you mean?
Exactly. So when we're making that transition from college, I'm sorry, from high school to college or the military or to the various different agencies that are out there, it should be the student that's making those phone calls. And all of that, they keep track of. I will be honest with you. Things, the other things that we always tell our students about, thank you notes. I think it was probably part of our senior presentation, if not. But, you know, I'm old school, but it's very important. We always tell the students to write a thank you note. Those kinds of things absolutely, you know, that shows your character. So I know that that's probably a roundabout way of answering your question. But I think it's really important to note that all of the different things, all of the different things that you do, if it's visiting, if it's filling out the card, if it's picking up the...
Conversations we'll be having, because they should be, hopefully, they are replicated throughout the community and homes. One thing I'd add about thank you notes, because I think, again, that transcends whatever it is that you're looking, whatever you're pursuing, proofread your thank you notes.
Yes.
Also, and I, this is frankly, some experiences I've had in the higher ed industry as well. If you're sending your thank you note via email, please send it from a professional-sounding email address.
Thank you.
If the word Kitty is in the email address, don't send it to a college.
Not a good sign. Yeah.
I don't think I'd be telling that advice so many years later. That wasn't mine. Just to be clear. But, all right.
It was a friend.
All right. So College and Career Opportunity Fair, Thursday, B1, B2, and B3.
Be there.
If you're not familiar with the high school, we didn't build cafeterias specifically for it. When we were talking about adding cafeterias, they were already there, we're just adding space for the fair. I think that was an important clarification. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to our subcommittee reports, which are going to be brief. Ms. Singer cannot be with us tonight. She sends her best and she'll give you your curriculum subcommittee report when she sees you next. The short version is, we heard about the guidance department. I think we covered that tonight. And we talked a little bit about the comprehensive high school and some of the high schools' plans for that, but we will revisit that at a later time. Mr. Withers has a policy subcommittee report.
At our last meeting, as you recall, we voted to approve policies listed in the agenda here, which were tabled until today's meeting. So at this point, I just take them off the, remove them from the table? I don't think we need to vote on anything.
It's unclear. It's something we're going to clarify in the policy subcommittee at some point. But a motion to remove the policies from the table and final approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done, Mr. Withers.
Thank you.
Okay. Our upcoming subcommittee schedule includes the Finance and Budget Subcommittee meeting tomorrow night in this room at...
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Infrastructure and Facilities on October fifteenth at...
I think we might be going to Coello.
Oh, really? Field trip, nice. Coello Middle School, October fifteenth, at a time to be determined. The policy subcommittee will meet on October twenty-seventh. And curriculum instruction will ride again on November eighteenth. At this time, the Attleboro School Committee will convene an executive session pursuant to Master in Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, to conduct a strategy session preparation negotiations with non-union and union personnel. The school committee will not reconvene in open session.
Second.
Mr. Soros.
Yes.
Mr. Withers.
Yes.